It's a little past ten o'clock. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners Court Meeting, County of Starr, Monday, November 28th. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Everyone being present. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being with us. If everyone would please stand for the political review.
The United States of America and for the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, we give this law the victory and justice for all.
I believe we have copies of the minutes. Time to review them. Is there a motion to?
Move the best.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Hall and Fair, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Claims, Ms. Gilbert. Is there a motion to?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion.
Under claims, have those checks been made up to the vendors that were pending?
Yes. There might be a few, but we got all the number.
When were the last one you sent out?
Last week.
Last week? They should have been paid off all the way we get pending.
Most of them. There might be some left that they didn't get to finish because they were making a solicitor, but they've gotten most of them.
All the old ones?
Yes. All of the year six have been paid and most of the year seven.
Any other question? If not, Hall and Fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, is there anyone that needs to come before the court? I see the attorneys. Put your item number.
Number twenty-two, Your Honor. Just Martinez.
Okay, we can move on to item number twenty-two. This is an action item on bids received from properties.
That's correct, sir. We had, these are struck-off properties which have been off the road for many, many years. We got bids on three of them. Two of them actually are in Roma. The city of Roma has placed these bids. There are photos, they're historic buildings and which they receive grants for to purchase. I believe one of them might have even been in the movie, Viva la Zapata, according to what they state. But anyway, those two are in Roma. The bids are laid out in your packet. The first one was a bid of $10,000 on a property valued at twenty-one. And the second one's a bid of $5,000 on a property valued at fifteen. Now, remember, these are not usable structures. They are to be just restored by the city.
What properties are those? What street are they?
Standing on the southeast corner of Estrella and Juarez. May I approach her?
Yes.
Yes. How much is the bid for that?
For this one, packed out. Alota.
Which is the other?
The other one.
So we do. So we do. No, we do.
They're pending.
See, there were the historical.
Because the post has done, the board's jumped out.
But you cannot demolish and we have to restore.
Their historical markers, they can't be, they can't be torn down. They have to be restored. He's got that own grant. They got a grant for like forty thousand dollars.
Get him right off.
And the other one?
Have the city and the schools approved?
SDC, everybody has already approved.
Are those on?
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion.
And the third one is a bid received on a piece of property here in Ruben, CIC. This is a property we've tried to sell four or five times, never got a bid higher than ten, twelve thousand. We got a bid of thirty-five thousand on this one, so.
And what's the value on it?
The value is sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty. It's in One Twenty-Two Sun, Bernardo Street.
At the Chupar.
Chupar.
I think the last time we got a very low bid.
It was like twelve thousand. Like twelve thousand.
I don't know.
Okay, is the motion is for all three properties?
For all three.
And the second? I have a motion, a second to approve all three bids. Any further discussion? Hall and Fair, please.
Aye.
Oppose.
Have the school approved them too?
Motion carries.
We're up next, next week on the school. But SDC, everybody else has approved. The next item, Judge, is just the resolution approving the sales.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution to approve the bid?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Hall and Fair, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. May I be excused?
Yes, sir. Anyone else? If not, we'll go on with our reports. Gas report, Mr. Rodriguez.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Morning.
My report is in your package. Basically, I just want to report on our rate hike has gone very, very smoothly. I expected more problems and, or more complaints than what we've had. We've had probably three businesses that gave us a little bit of complaint and almost no customers. So we're in pretty good shape with that. We've been explaining to them that last rate increase and it kind of makes sense to them, hasn't occurred since nineteen ninety-four. So they've been living in nineteen ninety-four prices for twenty-two years and it sinks on them and they're okay with it. Any other questions? I really.
It started taking place when? The increase?
The what?
When did they increase?
This month, November first.
November.
Okay. And this is for the month of November, the report? Yes. No, this is a report for October. Oh, this is for October, yes. But we implemented it in October, when the October counts.
So next month, we should have a little better profit.
Yeah.
Correct.
No, we should.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I believe you have another item, don't you?
Yes, sir.
You want to cover it now?
Do you want to discuss it?
Yeah. If we can skip to item eighteen. This is on the action item to approve a gas purchase sale agreement between us and Petroleum Fuel Company, the producer of gas gathering, Mr. Rodriguez.
We have a contract with the producer's gas that expired, I think, three to four years ago. And they had made an effort, I guess it was overlooked on their part. And of course, if they don't tell us, we're not going to, we're going to push it. But they came, came back at the beginning of the month and they brought forth a new contract and we presented the legal. I know Victor has some questions on it, if you want to address it at this point.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yes, I reviewed the contract about two, three weeks ago, Judge. It seems to be pretty standard. There's just a couple of clauses in there that concern me, the amounts to be paid. Need to go over them with Mr. Alvarez. But there's nothing striking that would say we should not enter into it. Upon our approval, I'd ask that the court enter it subject to our office's approval, Judge. Basically, if we're talking about terms of the amounts, if that, these are the proper amounts, then that's fine. Mr. Alvarez is more familiar with that.
So what you're recommending is that we approve pending the final approval from your office?
That is correct.
So move the best.
I have a motion to the respect. Any, for a second? Second discussion. Hall and Fair, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Was that the only item? Okay. Go back to our reports. Transfer station.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. The report is before you. It is a cover report. And I'm happy to report that we have a surplus this past month of three thousand, three hundred and sixteen ninety-eight cents. Other than that, that's all I have to report. And of course, the amount of tires that came into the transfer station are in the next two pages.
Yeah, the, now with the forty cents, that has really helped a lot, so that's good.
Yes, because actually Janie included the report both ways because we didn't know how.
Yeah, it's, is the forty cents, that's what it costs us.
Right here. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Currier, Ms. Penney.
Commissioner, good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
The general fund had three hundred and fifty thousand as of the end of October. That is four hundred and forty-one thousand less than the same time last year. We were barely able to make payroll. But there was a very large amount of bills outstanding at the time. The road and bridge had eighty-eight thousand. That was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand less than the same time last year. Overall catch was eight point five million. Total debt is at three point three million. Pledge collaterals are all well collateralized. Amusement machine funds, amusement machine fees came in at two hundred and sixty-one thousand for the month of October. That's twenty thousand less than the same period last year. I have a little statement on unemployment review for your review since it was in the media this week. The actual comparison of October to October is one point two percent lower than last year. Starr County remains the second highest unemployment in the state of Texas, second only to Crystal Cities of Hala County, which is at thirteen point seven percent. We have been able to send as of now more of the past due bills, but if we would have had a little bit more access to the line of credit, we would have avoided taking the county through the disastrous credit history with vendors. And we could have already paid it back, the line of credit, and used it only for the month or two, as needed, and then paying it back as soon as we don't need it. I don't know if they're charging us past due bills, past due interest, but the law does provide that we're supposed to pay them whether they ask for it or not. So it might be a better policy for the county to allow us access to dip into the line of credit. And that way, the county's credit history is not deteriorated or we don't pay past
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Penney.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Revenues for the month of October twenty sixteen, one hundred and forty-four thousand, ninety-six.
I noticed the number of inmates, county inmates have gone down. Has the intelligent defense program had anything to do with this?
They've been working at it, so it's good.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you. Federated State?
The report is before you. I'm going to go down the line for the Los Morenos project. We already have a couple of Eastments already signed. We are requesting payment for those property owners, for the Los Morenos project, for the TDHCA, the housing. We have one house almost a hundred percent complete. Hopefully by this week it'll be a hundred percent complete. The other two houses that are after precinct one and precinct two were about ninety percent, about eighty-five to ninety percent complete. Precinct one, precinct three, it's about ninety-five percent complete. So hopefully by this week, we'll have it completed. Precinct number four, we have.
Which is the one that's ninety-five percent completion in precinct two?
No, precinct three. Precinct three.
We have one over there almost complete. The other one is way off.
The other one is way off.
That contractor doesn't show up.
Well, I know he was working on precinct number three.
That's what happened in precinct number one. Can they?
I mean, I can get with the contractor and ask him, but I know we're about a hundred percent complete with precinct number three.
I mean, we've already talked to him. I mean, he's not a real kid. He should be more responsible and he should have some workers there. A lot.
Well, I'll go with him today, Commissioner, and I'll ask him.
The thing is, the thing is on those projects is they have an allocated time to complete. If they want to wait till the very last day and do it all, it's, we really don't have any.
And I know they do have, they do still have more time, but I'll go, I'll meet with the contractor then and ask him for more status.
All we can ask is to push him along, but they don't have to follow it, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
Precinct four.
Their contract to do the work, and they have a certain period of time. And then there's also a time when the program ends. And if you don't meet those deadline, then we have to actually go to the state to request an extension. At this time, we don't feel we have to do. And in some particular, in this particular contract, we're talking about, we have some houses to do.
But that's his problem. That's not my problem.
We got it now where the money's coming to you regularly and he's got pretty good. We did talk to him a little bit last week.
Yes, and we'll talk to him again today and ask him what the status is.
And we'll talk to him again, and I'll give him the scheduled dates, make sure he understands.
Make sure that he understands, if he doesn't meet it by the allocated time, there will be liquidated damages and they will be assessed. No, give me a break or that sort of thing, because he's, he's dragging his feet.
If you start doing that, then the contract will do everything.
The thing is, you talk to him, he never says no. No, why? He's not there.
I will, I'll fix you, and I'll be there. Have a checklist, just send people every day to the houses you're storing. Then we'll have dates, and you didn't show up this day, you didn't show up this day.
Because in comparison to the other contractor, the other one's very effective, very, very effective. Now, this guy, he slacks off quite a bit. And he won't tell you no. He's very hesitant for everything. Doesn't want to show up.
And you're like, maybe he took those more issue, but the problem was, and this is what's, what's hardest to hold, is the state will tell us go with the lowest bidder. And then when we feel we don't want to go with the lowest bidder, then we should spread it out a little bit to other contractors. And this time we only have two contractors. Then, then you have the thing I had to explain to the state why you didn't go with the lowest bidder, and now we have problems. Because the state will say, I'm not going to give you no more money or I'm not going to pay for anything. You should do something to me why you went there. And sometimes they'll, they'll say yes, sometimes no. And we run into these problems.
But if we have five or six legitimate reasons for not hiring that contractor, I don't think we have to hire him. Now, the problem is that there's no money for a long time. And some people just don't want to apply contractors. That's the problem. That's why we should get together with the state and make them send some money, because they can't work for free. I mean, they do thirty percent of the house and they don't get paid anything.
Yeah, and, but Commissioner, the contract itself tells them how much, how long it's going to take for them to receive a check. And if I send it to the state on time, I put the invoice, and it takes forty-five days and you run out of money, there's nothing we can do about it because the state tells you, hey, I have so many days to cut the check. Don't bother. And that's what we're giving. But it gets, we're chopping at it and we'll get more proficient at it. And then we got, we're going to reply for it, this time, I want to try to get, instead of five homes, ten homes. And maybe we can get some more things going. Again, if one, and maybe we want to limit our contractors to only two houses. That way, there won't be no money issues. And then, and I'll talk this big about it, but I have to go to the state this week.
Okay, I'm going to continue.
The only one.
With the NRCS.
The only one.
We're, I'm talking about the NRCS. I believe Mr. Montalvo spoke to you about the situation with NRCS. We do have the investigators coming in from Fort Worth today. They should start doing the investigation tomorrow. We did have a telephone conference call. Lori was present representing the county on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
But we will talk to Commissioner Gattuso.
Okay, Commissioner Gattuso, what's going on?
That is correct.
Yeah, what I told Rudy is that I hate, this is something that happened between NRCS and USDA. And they want to get the county in the middle, you know, and I said, that's their problem. It's not our problem. They need to fix it between them. You know, why get us involved in it? Now, all we want is for it to be done correctly. And whoever does it, it's up to them. You know, it's not our, we don't have a dog in that fight, other than the project needs to be done according to specs.
And we had Lori in the meeting with us. And they were talking about reducing the contractor. And I told them, nobody gets released from nothing until we determine exactly interlating the rule.
I agree.
What did they have to say on that? The law do?
Yes. They have an anticipated date of March twenty seventeen for the report to be complete on the investigation.
It's a simple thing, as the material that the way it was mixed was approved by engineer and he didn't approve by his boss, and he didn't inform us that he had done it. He did it on his own. And not that it's bad work or not that it was going to be doing, but they have to test it to make sure it's well compacted, the material. But it was very specific on what they had to do. And this engineer decided on his own.
Well, that's between them, because it was the only NRCS, something like, you know, they're going to test it and it's okay.
But that's, that's where we're at with that, but it seems to look good.
I don't think you'll ever, nothing would happen to it by the others.
But we don't want, we don't want to accept it and then accept the liability. They need to give it to us free of any liability. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Remind you that Colonial is still, we're still working with us for eight hundred thousand. It's going to be anywhere from four to eight hundred thousand. And else it's going to be, if there's more, of course, we'll notify the communities to expand their.
So for whole county or precinct two?
For the whole county. Split four ways.
Thank you. Under my report, I'm going to report on something that's quite interesting and I think very beneficial to Starr County. Everyone had been under a gag order for, for some months now, as to not to say anything about it, but now we can't. There's a refinery that's going to be built in the Bruning area. It's in the corner of Duval County. It's where the three counties, Webb, Duval, and Jim Hogg, come together, but it happened to be in Duval. The company bought two thousand acres because that's where the rail goes, what used to be the old, ex-rail, goes into, into Mexico. So it's a first refinery that's going to be built since nineteen seventy-five. They're going to be pumping in between half to one billion dollars of infrastructure. There's going to be a tremendous amount of employment. Ms. Benavides, Rose Benavides has already gotten with her about a job fair here for welders. They're going to be hiring somewhere around fifteen hundred to two thousand people for two years during construction. And then they'll, they're going to have four hundred permanent jobs after that. So, I mean, this is going to be a tremendous boost for the region, certainly for, for Duval County, and we're happy for him, Judge Carrillo. But, and I do want to thank him publicly because he has kept me in the loop as to what's going on, but now it's a done deal. They're going to be mainly focusing on jet fuel that will be sending, going into Mexico, but they'll have other byproducts that they'll be producing. And the rail is critical because they'll be sending it on rail. But I think that's a, a big, big plus for us because we have a lot of welders, we have a lot of people that due to Eagle Ford are now unemployed. And by the way, on the unemployment that Mr. Fernando mentioned, Mr. Penney, we did go down this month, this year, and it's not as slow as we've been because we were at single digits. But I think on account of the Eagle Ford unemployment, that's the reason that we're still double-digit. We're always looking for ways to bring it down. But I do want to thank the court because since my administration, when I first came in, unemployment was around thirty-five percent in Starr County. So to bring it down to eleven percent, that's a tremendous feat. And certainly, you know, the court, I think, should, should take credit for that. Also, the Industrial Foundation, SDC, and UTV, RGV, I think those have all been key players and certainly we thank them. But I think we're making big headway in unemployment. Hopefully, with this project and the new stores that will be built across from Walmart, we can get down to single digits. I don't think, you know, it's impossible to get it down. It's very possible and hopefully in the next year or two, we will be single digits. So anyhow, that's my report. We will be having a job fair. Ms. Benavides is working on that, so hopefully our people will get a fair shake at getting a job out there. If there's any, any questions, I'll try and answer them. If not, we'll go on with our agenda. Item six is a action item, and this is to approve the acceptance of Rio Delta Engineering as engineering firms elected to prepare all preliminary and final necessary for interim and final inspections on the Texas Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Montalvo.
This is for Colonial Projects. We've got the streets from Commissioners down, we've got the Fort Worth, and the surveys, the families, and whatnot, checking out the, well, the surveys, counting how many people live there and how many do reflect, and their income, and such things as that. Rio Delta was the sole commission. We advertise, we're adhering according to the plan, and Rio Delta was the only one to apply. So we're requesting that the Commissioner approve them as the engineer for the Bruning and final assignment plan. We've put the chair, and we've been kind enough to, a lot of things, a little, before we never, little small vehicle to travel from house to house, whether to walk from one block all the way to another block. I understand that, that I have staff, five, mostly women, walking those streets, you know, there's animals in it.
Is there a motion to?
We're going to do that and we can just go. Again, all this Colonial, you have to, how many people are affected? And, and what's that because? Fifty-five Wood Road where I live, they wouldn't, they don't want to do anything there. Now, El Tanque is okay. But look, if I don't go to El Tanque Road.
But Lo que pasa con El Tanque Road, Commissioner, they don't just have to make the impact on the road.
The Wood, I understand the Wood Brothers, they, they didn't accept it because they lack of, what, what, lack of houses, or?
Lack of beneficiaries.
Lack of beneficiaries?
Yeah.
And we have a section there that's not paid.
Yeah, in that back, or where the twenty-acre lots are.
Okay.
And so, it stops where the six-acre lots are, and then where the twenty-acre lots are, it's all brown. The same thing, uh, in some areas, it's, they, they have a need, but it only affects five people. So, nobody, you just manage that. Again, this colonial project is to affect as many people as possible.
I do some more, you're to approve.
Second. I have motion, second, to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Rudy. If you all need somebody who'll go with the girls, just call me.
Okay.
Item seven is also an action item, and this to request a loan from the general fund. Well, let's go ahead and take eight, seven, eight, and nine together. These are loans that we need to advance on the drainage project in Los Morenos. All this money is reimbursable, but we need to pay for it before we can make a claim for it, is that correct? So, is there a motion to?
Motion, second.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. Make sure when it gets back that you tell Ms. Guerra where it goes, so it can go back to the appropriate place.
Yeah, and in fact, if the project is moving along, Lori, they really pushed it hard, so.
We thank you.
It's really helped a lot. Do the paperwork.
All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item ten is the calendar. I've been asked about New Year, so that's the reason I'm presenting it at this time. Usually, we wait until December, but I think some departments need to just start planning.
Where's the calendar?
It's in the packet.
Martin Jank, or is it like today?
Uh, I think we, we've got less days this time. One, Thanksgiving falls, no, Christmas falls on a, on a Sunday, or Saturday, yeah, so, so we only get Monday and Tuesday. It falls on a Sunday, so we don't get that one. We only get Monday and Tuesday.
It's on Monday, Christmas.
Christmas is on Monday?
Yes.
Okay, okay. The day before is the one we do, because it's a Sunday. Okay, that's correct. And then I do not have a day for elections, because there are no elections other than the amendments, and I don't know if we need to close for amendments. It's up to whatever you want.
The amendments we have is like two hundred votes.
Yeah, and the reason we close is because they use the courthouse, but I think we can, they can have the election and, and still be, well, it's up to you guys, whatever you all want, you know? I got my, excuse my French, I got my ass in a bind last time because I recommended not to open, so it's up to you guys, whatever you all want. We can, we can add election date, which will be on a, probably a Tuesday.
I agree.
That we're getting off? Thirteen day. Yeah.
With, with that one included?
Without, without election.
Without election.
It's the same, we followed Idango County's format. Take, take a little time to look at it and see if you all want to change anything. If not, let, let me read, read the dates. We have New Year's Day, which is January the second, on a Monday. New Year's will be on a Sunday, and you, and then we get the Monday. Martin Luther King, January sixteenth. President's Day, February the twentieth. Good Friday is on the fourteenth of April. Memorial Day, May twenty-ninth. Independence Day, July fourth, on a Tuesday. Labor Day, September fourth, it's on a Monday. Columbus Day, October ninth, is on a Monday. Veterans Day, November tenth, is on a Friday. Thanksgiving.
It's supposed to be eleven, or?
Pero, lo, lo.
Por acá es sábado. Dar el viernes, porque acá es sábado.
No, no, no sé, I guess they're going to.
It's always on the eleventh, but it's a, it'll be observed on the tenth. So, see, if it's on a weekend, they give a three-day limit.
Yeah, because it's when the schools have their functions. But it's up to you all. We can take it off. Then we have Thanksgiving, the day, well, Thanksgiving will be on the twenty-third, Thursday, the day after, Friday, salud. And then Christmas, we have Christmas Day on a Monday, and then the day after Christmas, the twenty-sixth. So, for Christmas, we get two instead of three days.
That's for next year.
For next year, for seventeen. And then there's a note that there's no early release for Thanksgiving, Christmas, or any holiday, because normally, some departments want to take off at noon the day, day before, but, so that cannot happen. We need to be open till five.
Do you want to, guys, do you want the election day, holiday?
We can come back and add it, depending what, what the, the state does, you know, if they have something that's, well, or, you know, we can add it at any time.
If any of them need it, okay. But so, most of the calendar holidays is presented.
Okay. Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. The item number eleven is an action item, and this is to approve a policy for all county departments and our offices to submit vendor information to auditor's office for approval for Commissioner's Court. What this is, is we've noticed that some departments are just buying from anyone, and we don't have vendor's numbers, we don't have anything that IRS requires. So, what we're asking is that anytime any department wants to buy something, and it's a new vendor, let's say APC opens up a business for whatever, and someone wants to buy there, that's fine, all they need to do is get us all the vendor information so that we can have, for our files for IRS and whatever else is needed. I, I think it's good practice, that way the court has say as to what vendors will be doing business with the county, which ones will not. So, you know, I recommend that, that we do pass something like this. I have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Let me ask you something on that. When you said that the county chooses to see which vendor, is there any criteria a vendor could be disqualified, or?
I guess they need to be in good standing with the, with the state, more than anything, that they've paid, I guess, their taxes, or whatever it is to be in good standing. Usually, when you have a company and you have a franchise, you have to be in good standings with the state to do business with the state, so that's pretty much what we're asking.
And you can Google it.
Yeah.
Judge, you can actually go on there and tell you, like contractors, if you list all the contractor in the bag with the state.
Yeah, tho, those are, those are companies that are incorporated now. If you have a, let's say, someone that fixes weed eaters, and he's not incorporated yet, he can, you just send this is the vendor number, this is the address, this is his phone number, this, you know, whatever it needed. We know who to send the ten ninety-nine, or whatever it is, that we paid him X number dollars. That, that's what this is for, just more control for, to report. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twelve is a subdivision, Sonora subdivision. Mr. Garcia.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, for preliminary approval is a Sonora subdivision. It is under Mr. Rowan Science precinct. It's right before you get to the high school on seven fifty-five, where that Moss properties used to own them, and.
Can you keep it down, please, Mr. Penya? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's where the Moss properties used to own them, and I would like to recommend it for preliminary approval.
¿Cuántos acres son ahí, Hugo?
Well, it's, uh.
¿Lo conoces?
It should be in the legal description.
For this particular phase, the developer is doing twenty-eight acres, it's a total of under eighty acres. This is going to be the verge of the more protected.
I know these are a half acre.
Half acres, it will require a septic tank systems.
Septic tanks?
Yes.
Also, want to make a motion to approve the preliminary.
I have a motion, a second, to approve preliminary approval. Any further discussion? All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirteen is a final approval for the Laredo Estates Phase Two. Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir, this is a, it's a real nice subdivision that has been terminated. I would like to recommend it for final approval. It's under Mr. Science precinct. The firm, the, from Delta Engineering, we've been out there, everything is in compliance. The only thing is the, the lighting will be, probably, we might be going with Medina Electric. We have been with Mr. Science for requests as for the lighting. We might have to get together with MTC, you know, how much of the, I know we had issues with lighting before.
So, so they don't have a letter of agreement with Medina for the?
They don't have, they sent me a, did you send a, fully?
Yes.
Was the draft, Commissioner?
They sent me a draft, and I'm supposed to sign, I had it in my office.
The developer has paid the?
That, that's what I was going to.
They do with the electric company, they gotta have a written statement.
So, so the payment has been done for the electrical to the electric company?
Yes.
And they have signed off, now they're waiting for a sign off from the county.
And I have the, the request here.
They're gonna be installing seventeen chikari lights, and then they're gonna be installing their ones and the first ones as well.
Okay, because this is thirty-four, that would be for both?
Yeah, for both.
Okay. I want to make the motion, second. Final approval for the Laredo Estates.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item fourteen is to approve the bonds for the Texas Assessor Collector. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion, second.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, our budget amendments. Mr. Garcia, lean order.
President, move on. Second.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item nineteen is an action item, and this is to approve a contract between Starr County and Grandy Garbage. He did not submit the contract in time to, to get on the agenda, so therefore, I ask that, that we table it, even though everything's the same, the only thing is the change was the dates, but it wasn't on time, so we need to be fair with everyone and treat everyone the same.
Second.
Moved and second to table, item nineteen. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty is an action item, and this is to contract, it's a service agreement between Zera and, and County of Starr. Zera is a, it's a state branch that takes care of all our, our email addresses for the county. We've been doing this for, I don't know how many years, but, but they do a good job. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-one is a request from our DA, Mr. Escobar, to open a new bank account. I guess to receive pursuant to Texas Government Code forty-six, I don't know what, do you know what that is, Ms. Guerra?
No, sir, I don't know what it is.
Okay, I guess we can approve it and.
Oh, the twenty-one?
I'm sorry?
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
That, that's a, a sticker that they get from the state, the district office offices, they get the twenty statutory mandated.
Okay, so that goes into a separate account?
And it goes into the DA's account.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve. All in fair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, we will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries. Eleven forty-five, and we're back in open session, under orders, I mean, under executive session, we discussed order of salaries. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve order of salary.
Second.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carry. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved and second. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Julie.